So this is the first of two public hearings to discuss the proposed Northeast Kingdom Waste Management District budget for 2025. Would the folks on the phone like to just identify themselves? Penny, do you want to go first?
Yeah, it's me, Paul Lewis.
Oh, Lewis.
You know all that.
Yeah, okay. And Sky, you just want to say, you know, what organization you're with?
Yeah, my name is Sky and Green Mountain Rubbish.
So, typically how this works, we don't, well, it looks like someone else from NEK Rubbish is joining us. So,
Tom.
Yeah. So, Tom, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. You just want to say who you are and what organization you represent?
So my name is Thomas Sline and I represent North NEK Rubbish.
Okay, and here in the office, we have Steve Gray from the town of Lindenville. So the purpose of the meeting is to receive comments on the budget. I don't know if everybody has received a copy of the budget. But if anybody has comments that they'd like to submit, you know, now I guess would be the time to do it. You can either just, you know, mention whatever's on your mind. You can submit things in writing. However, you want to do it. But this is being recorded and we will have the recording available if, you know, if you want to listen to it at some point in the future.
I call Penny. So I guess my biggest concern is as small businesses, I'm being told that we're looking at a $3 increase a ton, which is a lot of money for, you know, a small company. And I just, I don't understand after all these years why it's jumping so much. I mean, in the past, it's been like 50 cents or a dollar. I'm like, but almost $3. That's, that hurts. I mean, that, that's something that, you know, is going to be passed on to the customers of Lindenville because, you know, we're not going to eat the money. We're gonna, you know, probably have to take away the senior citizen discount on Monday. You know, stuff like that. And that's, that we've been trying to hold on to through rising gas prices, rising food prices, you know, just trying to take care of our families. And I don't know, I just, I'm trying to figure out why such a big jump.
Yeah, well, you know, I guess you, you mentioned some of the factors that have played into that, you know, we are also facing higher costs. I will tell you that, you know, most of the budget increase is due to adding another person, changing the way we handle our trucking. We're going from owning vehicles to leasing vehicles. We're also, you know, trying to keep, keep up with payroll and offering, you know, our employees a fair wage, you know, to maintain them. So the other issue that we have is, you know, I'm going to be retiring at the end of next year and we need a little bit of money in the budget to facilitate that. So I mentioned this at a board meeting the last time we met that we're hopeful and you mentioned it yourself that typically we only increase the surcharge 50 cents, 75, a dollar maybe. There seem to be a number of factors that are kind of colliding at once. And I'm hopeful that, you know, this time next year, if we have this, well, we will have a similar meeting, that we won't be announcing a similar increase. This is pretty rare. I think the last time we had an increase was like this was when I first arrived back in 1999, going to 2000. But in that year, we took a lot of fees and rolled them into the surcharge. So there was a dramatic increase between 99 and 2000. So I hope that helps to explain it, you know, may not explain everything. Again, you know, the purpose of the meeting is to to receive comments. I'll certainly pass this information along to the full board. There is another opportunity to comment prior to the December meeting as well, but.
I guess I had one question myself.
Sure.
So, you know, we have a change in leadership in Washington, so prices start going down. Maybe next year you won't have to do that. Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that because we're taking steps this year to fund some of the things that we haven't funded or not funded properly, maybe would be a better term, that we won't have to go down this road next year. I don't, I don't think, you know, it's interesting. You mentioned, you know, prices coming down. I don't see prices coming down, but I do see prices not going up as dramatically as they have.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that's kind of a difference.
Fuel prices are going to go way down. Did last time you got in there.
You know, it's interesting because fuel prices right now are historic lows. A barrel of oil is trading at around $75 a barrel. You know, and if you do the math, if you look at the last time fuel was that low, you know, we'd be looking at under $2 a gallon for gas. So.
Yeah, well, my gas.
You know, with three.
I was paying $65 to fill my truck right before COVID. And now it's 110. So.
Yeah, I'm paying a hundred dollars right now to fill my tank also.
Yeah, so it ain't no historical.
Every day.
No, I'm just saying that the price of oil is at a historic low. Gas prices aren't, but you know, the, the difference is that the, the gas companies are taking advantage of the situation.
Oh, I'm sure, but I'm just saying.
There's other companies that are doing the same thing.
Yes.
Except us so far, but we're about to.
Yeah, I, you know, I certainly understand that, that you have no choice but to pass increased costs along to your customers.
Well, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, we can't, we can't control you guys, you know, going up. We can't stop it. None of our comments are going to matter. Because all this was already pre-planned anyway. You guys are planning on, you know, raising the rates every year. And I mean, it's going to happen continuously. Because Cella raises their rates every year. You guys have to raise your rates every year. I guess we're going to have to start raising our rates a lot more to be competitive in this, you know, market. We're not planning on retiring next year. We can't. We're not, we're not padding our, you know, customers to say, hey, we're planning on retiring next year, so we got to up our rate right now. Or I want to lease a new truck or something. So we have to up our rates so much. I mean, that's a lot to take on on us. That's thousands of dollars that, you know, tens of thousands of dollars coming from all these companies around here that haul waste out of here, but receive no benefit for this payment. We take all our recycling to zero sort. We're taking all our stuff to the landfill. The only thing that we do is take cardboard from our customers, I guess, and you guys don't get to sell it. That's the only benefit for you guys, I guess. But to charge us this amount of money for no benefit to us and we're just spending all this gas and all this tipping fees and everything, it's getting pretty stressful on us.
Well, you know, I, like I said before, I certainly understand that. But this is not unique to this district. You know, there are other districts that are going to the same.
The town of Burke doesn't do this to us. I said, I asked them.
Town of Burke is an independent town that doesn't provide nearly the level of service that we do. So, and, and to your point about what you get out of it, system wasn't set up for haulers. This is not a system, you know, that was set up to benefit the hauling communities, to benefit the, the members of the towns. And it's unfortunate because, you know, the little guy ends up paying, you know, a lot, but I'll tell you, you're not going to pay anywhere near the amount that Casella and Myers are paying because of this increase.
Well, no, if we, because we're not the size of them. I mean, they got thousands of customers.
Out that, right, you know, they're going to feel it a lot more than you are.
Right, but they should be in this meeting too, but they don't care because they're multimillionaires.
I mean, I can't speak to that.
Well, we know that. So they're multi, they're probably billionaires. So they don't care about these couple of dollars. I mean, they do, but they don't. They own the trash thing. All the trash that we throw in there, they own it. So all the trash that they throw in there doesn't even matter.
No, because they'll, they'll just up our price to cover.
Yeah, they'll just put our, our price will go up because your price went up. So it's all, it's all just killing the little guy, really. This is all just beating us up.
Well.
Yeah, I'm going to shut up now.
I, I will say that because of the proximity of our district to the landfill, we have more registered haulers than any other district in the state. So, you know, haulers are making it work. And yeah, you know, your customer is going to pay higher prices. And, and we understand that, you know, the, the state passed a law a few years ago that mandated page you throw. Part of the reason to do that was to make sure that people understood the actual cost of trash disposal. And the, the hope was that as trash disposal became more expensive, that people would generate less of it. I don't see that that's happened at all. And I think people will continue to pay and, and generate the similar amounts of trash. You know, you folks that are on the call right now actually provide a hugely valuable service because you provide trash disposal at the lowest point, lowest cost point. So yeah, you know, you'll have to increase your prices, but you're still cheaper than most of the non-public options, you know, you can't really compete with a transfer station that's owned by a town. But you can compete with, you know, curbside service.
Well, that's just because I go into your garage and get it and Casella will not. I go into your key padded door and Casella will not. If your barrel isn't out by the road, Tom isn't going to come knock on your door and see if you put your trash out today because I know you forgot again, Mr., you know, Anderson. You know, I'm, so I go up and knock on Mr. Anderson's door. Remember it's trash day? And he goes, yeah. So I get it. Because Sally doesn't do that. They drive right by. They see them barrels aren't there. Bye. No trash this week.
Yeah, you know, so you are providing a value-added service and, you know, the cost of that service is.
Going up.
Yeah.
So Paul, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know you said that this goes to the, the board. Is there any way that, you know, we can try and negotiate this down to break up such a big increase over the next two years? You know, instead of hitting us all in one year with a $3 increase, you know, I mean, can we get them to maybe be a little more reasonable and be like, okay, well, that's, that's a big increase. Maybe we can, you know, hold off on this truck for this site and, you know, maybe try and do something like that with a budget. Their budget isn't hit so much. And that way it doesn't kill everyone else's budgets.
I mean, I, I think that there's an opportunity to discuss that. I just am not real sure that we can delay some of the things that we've already delayed. You know, we, we have some flexibility with employee pay. But, you know, if you don't pay your workers, you lose them. And that, you know, that's one of the things that we've seen, you know, especially since the pandemic. It's really hard to find and, and retain employees.
Well, if you pay good employees, they stay. If you pay good, hardworking people that do their job, I, they do a good job and you don't have to babysit them and they do their job.
Well, that, that's part of the issue is we want to keep paying them, you know, to keep up with inflation and some of these other pressures that you folks have mentioned, you know, where we all feel the effects of the inflationary period that we're, you know, we've gone through and are continuing to go through. And, you know, we're trying to do our best. We don't make these decisions lightly. I will tell you that. You know, I, I take my job very seriously in trying to keep our costs down. I mean, you, you folks are all familiar with what our driveway looks like. I have people literally weekly saying, how come you don't put any money into fixing that driveway? Well, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't get done for free. So, you know, we, we do have costs of our own that we need to look at, you know, trying to address. And, you know, I know you mentioned it was $3. It's actually $2.75, which isn't a huge difference, but you know, again, we chose that number because $3 seemed, you know, too high. We'll tell you that our surcharge is right in the middle of most of the other districts, you know, in the state.
Right now, it's almost half of the price. It's, it's a quarter of the price of what it costs for us to dump at the, at the landfill. Almost, you're almost up to $30 per ton.
Right.
So that's almost a quarter of what we're spending at the landfill, just to dump off a ton. So we're adding another quarter to every tonnage price that, that we're doing now.
I, I hope you count your, your gas and your time and your labor in there too.
Well, if we did that, we couldn't even work.
Well, if you don't do that, I don't know how you, how, how you get by. So.
We just, we just barely get by. We don't go on vacations and stuff. I know that. We work, we work seven days a week.
For yourself on that time.
Well, I don't, I don't go on vacation.
We do go on vacation, but I also work a full-time job for the state. So.
I mean, we work seven days a week, some of us, non-stop. This trash doesn't stop just because it's Saturday or Sunday.
Oh, yeah. This week's a perfect example. I, I understand that. Well, you know, we had veterans.
Oh, yeah, Veterans Day off.
We sort of do, but we still have the same amount of work. So.
Right. Yeah. Because it doesn't stop.
I get it. Steve had a comment to make if you.
Well, Paul, before the pandemic, we used to always meet with the haulers in the fall and have a meeting. Do you know why we stopped us?
Well, yeah, it's a good point. We tried to have a meeting with the haulers and attendance continually dropped off. So, you know, I'm not opposed to doing that again. It's just that, you know, we have close to 30 registered haulers in the district. I think it's just under 30. You know, when we would have a hauler meeting, even if we said it was mandatory, we'd be lucky to get five or six haulers.
But how many, how many are actually pulling tons and tons of stuff out of your district?
They all pull tons out of our district. Otherwise they wouldn't be registered.
Well, I know one person who's registered that doesn't barely pull a ton out of this district.
Well, I'm sure you could point to examples, Tom. My point is they're all registered. They all have the same rules, you know, to follow that you do.
But if you have 30 people and then you divide that many people into the tonnage rate, how you figured it out, then, you know, that's how you could come up with a number of, well, we can just charge.
I'll tell you this, you and, and Louis produce or generate less than 1% of the total times in the district.
That's good. So that means.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, you know, yeah, we understand your concerns, but you know, there are players and I would say there's at least a dozen that are generating far more trash or hauling far more trash than you folks.
Right. So they're going to be paying more than us and they're just going to not have anything to say about it because they're not here.
Well, that's my point. You know, I mean, we can have meetings and we can have, you know, constructive conversations. What I guess I would suggest too is, you know, every one of our board meetings is open to the public. You don't have to wait for a budget meeting to provide input. And you don't even have to say anything. You can log in on and just listen to the conversation. And then maybe after, you know, a month or two of, of listening to that, you can provide feedback if you want to. But you know, you don't have to, but you can certainly listen to, to the discussion as it goes on. And, you know, we've had haulers on our board in the past. And, you know, some people look at me when I go to other meetings and say, how can you have haulers on your board? Well, how can you not have haulers on your board? You know, because they, they have a valuable perspective that we don't always get from, from other folks. So I, you know, I would encourage, you don't have to attend every meeting, but I would certainly encourage you to attend, you know, more of those meetings throughout the year, just to get a feel for, you know, some of the questions that we wrestle with throughout the course of the year.
So Paul, what, what is the percentage increase in the, in the K for the employees? So for me, I work for the state and I, I get a 3.5% increase.
Yeah, let me, I have that here.
So basically as the, the cost goes up, the tonnage cost goes up, the basic thing is to try to recycle more. So we take, keep our tonnage rates down.
Yeah, in theory, that's the way it's supposed to work, Tom.
Oh, it's a good theory.
Right. Like I said, though, it really hasn't played out.
No, probably never will.
Well, the people that have dumpsters.
Yeah, those are even better.
So much to dump. So if it's half full or full.
All right. Well, if you put cardboard, plastic and everything.
Yeah, now because some of the people may it's not the recycling, but they didn't say, hey, they.
Well, that's, that's what we're seeing. And Penny, I don't mean to push you off because, you know, I'm going to answer that question for you. I want to say it's right around 6%. And you may say, wow, that's a lot higher than, you know, other places. We haven't kept up with our peers either in other districts or similar organizations in the local area. So again, this was, this was the year we thought, well, you know, maybe we can bump that up some. But, you know, like I said before, that might be a question, you know, for the board. And maybe we don't implement the raises January 1st. You know, maybe they consider June, you know, then that way we have six months worth of data to figure out whether or not we can afford it. But I'm not opposed to, to increasing the, the surcharge incrementally. Just a little reluctant to wait, you know, an entire two-year period. I can tell you too, that the board has the authority to lower and raise the surcharge at any point during the year. You know, this year we saw a lot of tonnage from flooding. And so that makes budgeting for next year a little more difficult because we don't know exactly how much of that was attributed to flooding and how much of it was just regular disposal. And you might say, well, don't you track, you know, where it comes from and what type of material it is. We do it to a certain degree, but we can't split it out. You know, and say for sure how much was from the flood or the floods and how much was just normal trash generation.
So I got one last comment. I understand I don't, you know, I take 1% out, whatever. I still have bills to pay, no matter how much garbage I take. And I just think 2.75 is way too high. And that's my feeling.
Yeah. And I, you know, I hear that everybody here is, you know, echoing the same thing. So I'll certainly, you know, Steve will be attending the meeting. Like I said before, if you folks want to stay on, even if you're just in the background listening, you know, this will come up during the budget discussion. And, you know, it might be helpful that the board hears some of your concerns.
Hey, Paul, I think we had probably carrying at 6:30 with the board was on, on call.
There was some confusion there as to why the meetings were an hour apart. I thought I was scheduling the meeting immediately before the board meeting. And then Michelle said, no, you set it up for 5:30. There's really no reason, no good reason why it was set up an hour apart. But, you know, I think it's good because in the 25 years I've been here, this is the most discussion we've had at a public hearing for the budget. And so, you know, I think that's great. You know, I think the more people hear about it, know about it, understand what it's about, the more comfortable they are with it. I'm not saying that, you know, everyone would be supportive of it. I'm just saying it's good that people have more information to make accurate decisions.
But do you notice that the, the whole thing about all of these people showing up for your little meeting today are about one thing in general? Because it's something that's going to hurt us like pretty significantly. When we raise our prices, we raise our price a penny. And it usually helps us pretty significantly. If I go from 18 cents to 19 cents. So from when you go to from $2, from a dollar something to 2.75 or from 0 to 2.75, you take us from 0 to 100 right quick. So now we're all connected to your meeting like, hey, no, this is bad. We need to say something about it. But even though we say, no matter what we say, you guys are going to do what you want anyway. So it's really, it's not like we're voting today and being like, hey, I want to vote and say no. Because we all just voted and said the same thing.
Tom, this is the first time, you know, you've expressed this level of interest in our budget.
Well, actually, I say every time I came in there, wait, here's your free money.
The board, it's not, it's not free money, Tom.
Well, it is for me.
And again.
That's what I feel like. That's my opinion is how I feel like I'm giving it away for free because I don't bring any of my recycling to you. I take it all to Zero Sort in St. John's Bay or Casella up in Coventry. None of my customers really go to you to do anything and anything that's brought to you makes you money anyway.
But, but we get thousands of tons yearly through the system. You know, I, I understand you're focused on your business and, you know, why wouldn't you be?
So are you. That's what you're doing.
Focus on your business, Tom.
No, you're focused on yours. You know, you're focused on your business.
I have the membership to think about. You know, the 30 haulers, they're part of the system. You know, when, when I first started here, we used to charge haulers a registration fee. We got rid of that because it didn't make any sense. We didn't generate a lot of revenue.
But none of it really makes much sense because you're charging us.
Because you've never taken the time to come in and, you know, have the system explain. Again, it's not for the haulers. It's for the, the businesses and the residents of the district.
We are a business and a resident of the district. I am anyway.
And I certainly understand that. However, when this district was formed, they were formed and they, they introduced a budget of, I think in 1992, it was like $1.6 million. It was soundly rejected by the voters because they didn't want to spend that kind of money. So the district learned that there are things that happen in this area that the private sector does well, trash collection. There are other things like the hazardous waste, the recycling, recycling of certain items, collection of tires, you know, all those things that the private sector has no interest in doing. Or if they do, you know, the cost for doing so is, is high. You know, just go to the St. John's Bay Transfer Station and looks at some of their fees for some of these things. That's where the district comes in. That's where the district comes in.
But anybody can go to the St. John's Berry, anybody. If I send somebody from Burke to you with a tire and they go, oh.
Cause they don't pay, they don't pay for the service, Tom.
But they could still pay you the ten dollars for the tire.
They can't because then everybody would do that and we'd never get enough revenue.
You'd be making more money than no revenue.
Not a ten dollars a pop.
We just get rid of them for two dollars a pop.
I would, I would love to have this conversation with you to explain.
I was making money at six dollars a pop selling them to you. Or giving them to you and paying you to take them away. I was making money, good money too, by the way. So if you take a tire for ten and sell it in tons by whatever the dollar a piece that you get rid of them, I don't know. If you're getting them for me for two, you're selling them for less. So it makes sense, but to not.
The cost of disposal to get rid of the tires. We're not driven like you folks are.
So, well, we have to be because.
I know, because you're a private business, you're a private business. My point is we're in the public sector here at the district. We've taken the things that the private sector either didn't want to do or would only do for high prices. You can argue with the way we fund the operations. But.
That's why we're here.
Not, this is not unique to this district. You know, you have uh, a surcharge, you have some hauling fees, you have per capita fees. And that helps you provide the services to drain the freon from the refrigerators that, you know, if we charge ten dollars a unit, they're just going to get tossed over the bank somewhere or miraculously they come in with the lines already cut. Same with the household hazardous waste, probably one of our most expensive programs. But if we charge for it, people aren't going to participate.
Right, exactly. So if we charge more money for our garbage, then people are just going to not have us pick it up.
You really think that's going to happen?
So we've had, I've had people cancel because I raised their price five dollars. And they're like, yep, never mind. I'm like, well, you're, the amount of trash you put out a week went up. So, so did your price. I mean, I didn't say it like that, not rude to my customers like that, but just saying that's how it works.
Well, yeah, we provide a service and they have to be willing to pay for it.
So I'm just going to say goodbye and thanks, Paul. And I do look at the budget every year and I do hopefully know that I speak out when I want to.
Well, I'm not that, I'm not that smart yet. I'll figure it out.
I just think that rate's a little crazy. That's all.
No, and I, I, I hear you. And, um, you know, I'll pass the message along to the board. And like I said, there are a couple of options we have where maybe we delay.
No, and I said, I think that's a good option right there, but delay thing. You just don't do it all at once. You know what I mean?
Right.
That would be a great idea.
And see, you know, when we were going over the budget, my thought was let's get it all done at once. So we don't have to go there next year.
Hmm. Yeah. Well, maybe next year might be a better year for us instead of going there all at once this year and we don't even know how it's going to go.
No, and I, 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 I can't disagree with that.
I think that election is going to make a big difference with gas, everything.
Well.
That's what I experienced last time when we had that. The Republicans in there, my gas was lower, my food was lower, everything.
Kamala went in, it would have been way better, Louis.
I think, I think time will tell.
Politics out of this.
Right. Yeah. I think time will tell, you know, what's going to happen. You know, next year even. So, you know, I, I'm thankful that all you folks, you know, participated. I'll certainly relay the message. Steve's sitting right here, you know, he'll uh, relay the message. And like I said, if you want to stay on, cause I'm not, I don't have a separate login for the meeting, you know, the, the full board meeting. You can sit in the background and, and just listen if you want to, you know, I'm sure you got better things to do on a Tuesday night, but, you know, it, I think understanding the district's perspective might be helpful to a certain extent. You know, I know you obviously have a different perspective because you're business owners and you're concerned about the prices going up. You know, I, I understand that certainly. You know, part of my, um, responsibility is to, you know, take these things seriously, consider them, but you know, I also want to turn the district over to my successor in, in good shape. You know, I simply just set my pen down and walk away and say, you know, figure it out, but I don't want to do that. So, you know.
You don't have to set them up with such a good salary.
Tom, this might surprise you, but, um.
You probably don't make much.
Right. And, and if we think we're going to attract somebody for what I'm making, then.
It was, it was, it was a joke, Paul.
Yeah.
But.
My only thing is I'm scared when you bring it up three bucks, then you think you can do it next year.
I think we give the price of gas when up three dollars.
I want it to keep going. You know what I mean?
They, they took it well last year. We'll just give them another three this year. We'll have two new trucks. That can't be good.
No, I guess.
All I can say is if you look at our track record, we've never done that. Does that mean it'll never happen? No, but you know, I can't, I can't predict the future.
I hear you there.
You can make it easier. Just do a dollar twenty-five, Paul.
It, it, then, then it makes it easier for you, but not fairly us. And, you know.
Ah, I wish I could come work there. Oh, I'd fix it. I'd try to.
Well, the position's going to be open soon.
I know, I can't, I don't have time.
Twenty twenty-five.
I'll have two hundred customers mad at me if I come work there.
I'm sure, uh, Lewis and Sky would be wanting to pick them up for it.
I bet they would.
No, 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 maybe.
They don't like working. They don't like working this hard. This is too hard. I'm tired.
Listen to you, Tom. I had your job. Don't forget that.
I threw six hundred trash bags today. I'm tired.
I used to do that all by myself, buddy.
Ah, yeah, it's a good time. I gotta get some of my customers to make lighter bags. Cause I'm getting tired of climbing up the truck with them.
So are there any other, uh, comments that you'd like to make?
Definitely not me. No, quit.
I think we're good, Paul. We just, we just wanted to kind of let you know where, where we're at and stuff like this definitely can make people, you know, start to panic a little bit and people who already struggle to pay for things, but you know, like Tom said, it is what it is, you know, it's like that's, it's a business, your business, we, you know, we can all just hope for the best.
And, you know, I was concerned with putting forward the budget that, that I did because, you know, we're first. Before any of the towns introduce their twenty twenty-five budgets, our budget will be finalized. You know, the town budgets don't come out, you know, they'll come out in January, but by then ours will be approved. So we're kind of, you know, testing the waters here. I don't know what town budgets are going to look like. My guess is you're probably going to see similar increases there as well. But again, I don't know that for sure. I don't think you'll see too many town budgets going down. Um, that I feel, you know, confident about.
Well, none of their budgets going up affect us.
Well, they do because you're, you're taxpayers.
Yeah, tax. If you have a house, yeah.
Our, our property tax bill just went up a thousand dollars here in St. John's Berry. So I, I feel it there too. So.
Yeah. And that's the unfortunate thing, you know, everybody is getting squeezed from every direction. And, you know, if we can squeeze a little less, then we'll, we'll certainly try to do that.
That would be great.
So we, we still have time before the full board meeting starts. I'm going to probably, you know, I'll keep recording in case any, you know, come up with any other thoughts, suggestions, whatever, comments. Um, please feel free to chime in. If you want to leave, feel free to do so. If you want to log back on later, I'll see when you join the, uh, the waiting room and I can let you back in if you want to do that too. So.
I don't know if Louis will log back on, but believe it or not, I'm going to a dentist appointment for seven fifteen tonight.
Wow. Yeah.
Oh, well.
I, I know it's, well, it's the emergency dentist in Glover because one of my backgrounds broke. He's gonna, he's just gonna go in and refix it for me. But yeah, it's at seven fifteen at night. I don't even usually stay up that late. Just.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, good luck with that, Penny. I hope it works out for you.
Oh, well, I've had to see him before. But yeah, I don't know if Louis will hop back on or not, but I'm sure, you know, you guys can fill him in.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna, you know, stop talking. Uh, we'll take roll in about twenty minutes after more of the supervisors show up. Um, and if you're on, I'll, I'll, you know, write your name down as part of the full board meeting too. But again, don't feel like you have to say anything, but certainly if we start discussing the budget and you don't feel like Steve and I have represented your concerns accurately, then, you know, by all means, uh, chime in.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul. I'm out of here.
Okay.
Have a good night. But yeah, I'll have to get more information from you. I'm just, I'm not smart enough yet. So that's why I just wanted to stay out of this stuff.
Before you leave, Tom, Steve wanted to say something else.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let the haulers know that every time the surcharge has gone out, I, I have thought it at the board meetings. So I keep, I, I represent the town. But I also keep the haulers in the district in mind. When we talk about issues.
Yeah.
To see if it fits for everybody.
And Tom, I will, uh, throw this out there too. The town of Linden is looking, they, they have the ability to have three supervisors and right now Steve's the only one. So if you had an interest in participating more, you could represent the town on, in an official capacity.
Yeah.
So. I know it sounds thrilling, you know, unpaid commitment, but you know, I just figured I'd throw that out there. So.
Yeah. Where do you apply for that?
Town hall. Office.
Town hall, yeah. Where, same place I went to vote. Right? Behind the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well, that might be, what's the position called?
Uh, Waste District Supervisor.
Yeah, call it Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, Justin Smith, the, uh, town administrator.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll look into that over time here. Uh, just cause, I mean, it would be nice to know more about it all. Just so I could, when I did put in input, it was, uh, you know, fungible.
Well, and, um, you know, even if you didn't attend the meetings, we would be sending you all of the monthly information, which, you know, if you request, you don't even have to join the board. We could do that anyway. All you have to do is ask for it. So, we can send you minutes, agendas, the notes for the meetings. I, I think the notes are kind of useful because you know, the agenda items give you an idea of what we're talking about, but the notes kind of explain what we're going to talk about. And it's usually like one or two pages. So, and there's a budget update every month. So you can track, you know, our expenses and our revenues. So, yeah, you know, there are ways to get more involved without getting, I guess, too involved.
Yeah. Well, once too involved, then, you know, hopefully it would, it, it would help, you know, us haulers.
Yeah.
You know, in some capacity.
Yep.
But I mean, in some sense, there should be a way to help you guys too. If we could figure out different ways to do things that make you guys more money.
Right, without having it all put on the surcharge.
Right. But what's, you, yeah. I mean, you guys make money off tons of cardboard, right?
Well, yeah, you know, we, we do generate revenue. The problem is, um, you know, a, about fifteen percent of our overall budget comes from the sale of recyclables.
Right. So that's not much at all. That's nothing.
Right.
So it would be better to make it twenty percent.
Oh, absolutely. But the only way to do that are two ways to get more recycling, but to keep the price we get for recycling elevated. And that's the one thing we don't have any control over.
Is the price of recycling? No, just like the price of metal. Like if we, like you want to sell tons of metal, you're going to keep it all for five years until the price goes back up.
And we don't have the space to sit on trailer loads of material. And so, you know, that's one thing, like in a town, you have your grand list. And sure, it does change over time, but not like the recycling markets. You know, we can, we can be getting fifty dollars a ton one year for cardboard and a hundred and fifty the next year.
Right.
Dramatic difference.
But right now it's a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for trash and next year it's going to be two hundred and ten.
Well.
It never goes back down.
No.
Never says, hey, guess what? It's sixty dollars a ton again.
Right. Nope, you're right.
So when you guys get the gain, we're still losing. Cause, oh, we need more cans and now price of cans just went up. So you send them all the aluminum, you got it. Five dollars a ton instead of thirty cents a ton. Hmm. But I mean, I guess that would just be a, a bonus at that point.
We can't sit on commodities like that.
No, they have to move because you don't have the space. Otherwise you'd have a shipyard full of stuff.
Yeah.
Waiting to sell it.
Yeah. So.
I know.
You know.
It's like, I can't sit on trash to wait for the price of trash to go down.
Exactly. And we have, you know, pressures on us to generate revenue in the same manner you do. You have the bag fee. And I, I get it. People complain when prices go up. You know.
Even a, a dollar or, I mean, how do you, how do I go up ten cents on every bag? This one's a dollar ten now or five ten.
Right, right.
You know, it's got to be a dollar increase or how many people are going to bring change with them? I gotta carry around a bag of quarters now when I go.
Well, you know, those are decisions you, you, you would have to make, but I certainly understand that you, you don't want to have, you know, increments of ten cents.
Right. There are dollar increases every time something goes up.
Yeah.
It was a five dollar bag. Now it's a six. Oh, you're over seventy. We used to charge you four dollars for this. Too bad. Five. Go talk to Paul about it.
Well, you know, if, if you want to direct your customers my way, I'd certainly be more than happy to explain.
Why their bag will open up a dollar.
You might not be happy with how I explain, but.
They probably won't be happy coming in there either.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we're trying not to, you know, hurt our customers, you know, and the only way not to do that, cause, cause Sawa, you know, they charge whatever they want. And they just have the general, you know, between Myers and Casella, they are the big guys. You know, and then you have Dave's rubbish, which he doesn't agree with this either. He's actually in the same, he probably do it a little bit nicer than.
Nobody is, is pleased.
There's, there's not one hauler in this area that anyone we mention it to, Fred isn't here either. I, Fred should have been here. But he doesn't like it either, but he's ready to sell the business anyway. So you're just like, oh, I don't care. Just going to have to deal with it till I'm done. I, I got ten, fifteen years of this now coming to me. If I, as long as I do this and keep going, I got a long time of this. These guys are getting out, you know?
Right.
Dave's ready to sell, he's ready to sell. Casella's not going anywhere and they don't care what you charge them. They're still going to run their business through here like a freight train.
Well, cause they make money on both ends, the hauling and the disposal.
Yeah. Can't be, you can't beat them. And you can't join them.
Unless you, uh, site a landfill.
Or start selling to, or sell to, sell my company to them.
Right.
And then they'll put out more zero sort containers around here. And then that takes away from your business, but then you could just charge them more on the tipping fee.
Well.
That's the way it'd have to work. Yes.
Our tonnage been pretty consistent over time. We have seen, you know, some decrease in what we're processing because of single stream, but I think you'd be surprised.
Have you ever been up to the landfill, Paul?
Oh, yeah.
And like looked around inside the hole?
Oh, yeah.
And seen all the stuff in there that's inside your little building over there? That's all in the ground over there?
Right. A lot of it's recyclable.
Tons of it.
Yeah, I know. It's a shame. It's a shame.
Yeah.
Uh, Vermont, I think, took some steps to try and. Get people to to, you know, pay attention. You know, it's interesting, people will bitch about paying five dollars. To dispose of a bag of trash, but they'll pay, you know, five, six dollars for a. Uh, eight ounce bag of potato chips.
Yeah, or or a Starbucks coffee drink in a glass bottle that.
Exactly, every day, every day. So. You know, are people affected by these increases in prices? I don't know, you know, maybe people need to start making smarter choices about what they spend their money on. Um.
That's for sure. You should see the stuff I throw away.
Yeah.
The stuff I keep.
Exactly, and.
The stuff I keep.
The best way for people to save money is to not produce trash in the first place, yet. We haven't seen any drop in trash generation. Uh, in the twenty-five years I've been here. We, you know, it it happens, but. It follows the economy. When times are good, trash goes up. When times are bad, trash goes down. Doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out. Why that is.
Yeah, you should see trash at Thanksgiving time.
I do, we see.
Thanksgiving and Christmas ridiculous.
Christmas is our busiest.
Yeah.
Time of the year.
So just think, if everybody had enough money to give your kids birthdays like that every, every, every month.
Right.
There'd be. Trash everywhere, but we can't afford to do that. We have a couple holidays where we can blow some money and then it's over.
Yeah.
And then, but hopefully, it, I mean, people figure out how to. You know. Throw stuff, less stuff. Cuz they throw away everything, every, everything in this society is just throw away. Throw away everything.
Yep. And people think they're doing a good job by recycling. And and yes, we wanna encourage that, but we also wanna encourage. Purchasing less in the first place to save money. That's the biggest, best way to save money is not. Purchasing certain things.
Yeah, so if they're spending more money on garbage, there'll be less money that they could spend on junk.
Right.
Yeah.
If you spend less money on junk, you're spending less money on trash.
Yeah, but hopefully. The cycle doesn't break for a little while.
Well, we'll, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, hopefully they pay to get rid of a whole bunch of trash for a while and then. Then we can just take a break and we got all their money. And trash.
Yep.
Yeah, hopefully. Uh, yeah. Well, we're gonna have to figure something out because. These prices keep going up, it's gonna be a hundred dollars a month for people to get trash removed cuz Sella's already at sixty.
Right.
I'm charging people forty-five and fifty to go get their trash up in Newark in the middle of nowhere.
Right, and. You're gonna see, I think, as Casella increases their rates, that you you'll get more and more of their customers.
Oh, I do.
Yep.
But, I mean, pretty soon, I'm gonna be up to their same rate is what I'm getting at. I don't wanna raise my customers' rates. I'm afraid to do that. In a sense, cuz most of them already complained about it. Already, a few of them said, hey, you need to raise your prices cuz theirs was too low, and I raised theirs. So.
Yeah, you don't hear that very often.
No. So, some people, you know, have gotten their rates raised, but you know, they mentioned that theirs was too low and I seen that. But I mean, I have a lot of elderly people too that are, you know, eighty-five, ninety years old. That don't leave their house, that have one bag of trash a week, that I don't wanna charge them any more than twenty-five bucks a month. And I still have to because it costs me money to drive there.
Sure.
At seven, I get seven miles a gallon in my truck.
Right.
So. That's a hundred dollar a day fuel bill. And then I have a two hundred, three hundred dollar dump bill a day. And then. Whatever my tonnage is for you guys.
Right? Yeah, I, and it's all going up, like, I get it.
Yeah. Oh, but none of us like it going up unless you're on the other end of the receiving end of. Hey, we're getting a new truck and new employee to do stuff. I can't, if I could hire a new guy to do stuff and go drive my truck, go pick up trash, that'd be great, but I would have to increase my rates a lot.
Well, and you just.
So I'd do it on myself.
Explained our situation.
I know.
So.
It's the same one all of us are in.
Are you recording already, Paul?
It's hard to be, it's hard to be in business. For sure.
We're, uh, we're wrapping up the, uh, public hearing portion of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm getting out of it. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you.
And, uh, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, sounds good.
Have a good night. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
You're gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, how did you get, yeah.
Push it down to the bottom bar.
Okay.
I I think. You know, I don't know that much about it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Right, so I think if you go here.
Waste Management District, this is Paul.
Right there, so if you need to turn up, just click on that.
Okay. Very.
Okay, do you want to just be on speakerphone for now? If I, um. If I lose you. Call me back. Can you hear me, Daryl? Okay. Turn the volume up. So Shannon, I see you're on, um, Daryl Martin from, uh. Holland. Is on the phone.
Sound good. Who's there in person? Is it Steve Gray and?
Jack Smith.
Thank you.
Steve. There's Jack. So Shannon, I have eleven people. I don't know if that's what you have, or eleven towns represented.
So far, yeah.
Okay, good. So, um, just wanna let everybody know. Um, I did start recording the meeting at, um. Um. Five thirty to receive comments, um, regarding the budget. Um, and so the recording is still going. Um, I guess at this point, because all the folks. Who attended have, um, signed off, although Steve Gray was here. Um, I'm just gonna officially bring a public hearing to a close. Um, but we'll wait until we get more people. Before we start the, the board meeting. Um, who is two, seven, four, five, two, eight, eight?
Uh, it's Walter Danville.
Okay, thank you, Walter.
Paul, would you like to stop the one recording and start a new one for the two meetings? So if anybody wanted a copy of one meeting, they wouldn't have to receive both of them?
Um. I'd love to do that, Ken, but I'm afraid that I'd mess it up some. So we're gonna, we're gonna go with, uh. A lengthy meeting. And Daryl, you can hear folks when they speak?
I'm hearing you fine. Leave it Charlie, perfect.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, someone just logged on, um, as user. Uh, could you identify yourself, please? Um, you, you must be muted.
That there?
Um, that's Fran, right? I got you.
Yeah.
Man, yeah, someone else logged on under the name user.
That was probably, I have a new iPad. I'm having a little bit of an issue with it. It may be me.
No, your name comes through.
Okay.
Francis's iPad. Actually, it might be Bruce from Island Pond.
Um. I don't know, that says I'm here.
Oh, okay, you're above that other person.
It's Diane Simpson, I can't. Can't have more than one person on the phone. Hi, Dan.
I, I, can I show my face here or not?
Uh, you don't have to.
Want to have a big crowd?
We did. Actually.
I see.
Um, so whoever logged on as user, you know, please identify yourself, otherwise I'm gonna have to. Get you out. Diana just called. And like I said, I I didn't necessarily expect Daryl to call, so. I would have.
Paul, we are open to the general public, but do people have to announce their name if they wanna come in and attend?
I think that only makes sense. I'm not sure what the rules are behind that, but. Um. You know, we are more than welcome or, um. Welcoming of anybody to attend, but.
Yeah, before you throw anybody out, somebody ought to legally answer that question.
Do you wanna take a stab at that, Ken? I don't know that we have any.
I have no idea what the rules of the state are about people attending public open meetings. Do they have to identify themselves? Can they just come in and sit down? What's our chair think?
Which, uh. He hasn't logged on either. Okay, eight, two, two.
This is Gina.
Is that Gina?
Yep.
You're the eight, two, two number?
Yes, it is.
All right. So Shannon, I have, uh, fifteen towns represented. Um, Jan Clausen did just show up, so you wanna mark him on your sheet?
I have seventeen. But. Um. Yeah. That's what I have.
Okay, I just. Got Carwin Flanders, so I'm up to sixteen.
And, uh. Yeah, I'm use, I'm using the new one. I don't, I mean, I'm double counting. Jack.
For Wheelock and Sheffield. Um, and you're aware that, um. Irene and Fran count as one.
There you go.
Okay, so sixteen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we're still seven. Shy of a quorum. Um. I have heard from a few folks, uh, Westfield won't be attending, Paulette. Won't be attending and she represents three towns, um. I wanna say Cabot will also not be attending. I just reached out to Nick. So hopefully he'll sign on. Yeah.
Shorter quorum?
Yeah, by seven.
Oh, ooh, I don't think we're gonna get that in the next minute or two.
I think you're right. Right.
No minutes. Okay, I'll, I'll have discussion. Okay. Diana said she's on, but she doesn't have a voice to talk.
So, but she's. She must be user.
She can see me. Oh, she's in.
Okay.
But she doesn't have a voice to talk, but. She could use a chat box, right? Uh, chatting.
Yeah. Let me see. So Diana, if you, um, can hear me. Can you just, uh, respond in the chat box? Should be at the, kind of the middle, the bottom of your screen and just. Type a message that says, yes, I can hear you. Okay, great. So Shannon, that's one more. Diana Simpson from Sutton. We're still six people short. So Walter, I think you are the vice chair. I don't know if you want to make a decision about how long to wait.
Well, I feel we should. Well, it's, I've got six forty one. I think it's still wait. I mean, six is a lot. It's not like we only have one or two. I'd say wait another ten minutes.
Okay. Sounds good.
We'll see. See how it goes from there. Then we can have an information meeting if you so desire.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'd like to do that because we had several haulers participate in the public hearing, so I'd like to share some of that conversation. And also Steve Gray participated as well, so we can at the very least do that. So Daryl, I see you just appeared on the computer screen.
Yeah, but my problem is I don't have any audio with it.
Okay, so we'll keep you on the phone then.
Yep, great. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Did the open house go? I'm sorry, I couldn't make that.
I think it went pretty well. I didn't actually attend it myself, but I heard good feedback, so that's good.
Their driver was most helpful about a week or so ago with his pickup from Holland. I guess he had picked up that morning from Morgan and picked us up afterwards and it definitely we cleaned a lot of stuff out. It was nice.
Oh, good. Yeah, it's good sometimes to meet the driver on the site and then discuss things because we don't always see things from your perspective and the same goes, you know, from from the town's perspective, so it's I think it's always helpful to have that kind of a meeting.
Yep, I agree.
So good. I'm glad that worked out.
I have space now available for styrofoam. And wondering if that's something that I should start thinking about taking.
Well, you might not like my answer. You can start thinking about it, but we still have a backlog to work through. We're, we're gaining though. And we'll, we'll see if maybe we can set you up. You know, close to the holidays so that you can get some of the Christmas material that will come through, but right now I'm hesitant to add anymore until we get a better handle on it.
Okay, okay. I'm thinking that one of those big plastic bags makes sense because there's no weight to this stuff.
Well, we, we actually have what are called super sacks.
Yep.
You've probably seen grain and things like that stored in them or transported them. They're smaller than the clear bags that we have, so when you're ready to go, we'll provide you with those bags.
Okay, so keep me posted with it.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Sure.
I think they just checked an eye print, I think.
I don't know.
We think they'd have done it during the day when they can see.
I don't know.
Well, it looks like we've got about four more minutes.
Paul, I noticed at the bottom that we now have AI companion in Zoom. Can we use that to generate the supervisors that are not there?
Ooh. I have no idea, Steve. I see you're joking based on your smile. I thought you were talking about generating a list of the ones who weren't there so we could call them out somehow, but I see where you're coming from now.
Yeah, AI is there for creation.
Right. We, uh, it's unfortunate because if Nick and Paulette were on the call, that would be five additional towns. We'd only need one more and I could probably make a phone call to somebody. So Shannon, do you still, do you have seventeen?
Yes, the last number we had is what I still have.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if we went down one. And I can't remember why we would have, but just want to check. Thank you. Have you heard anything from Jean from Rock Gate lately? He calls, he calls us. Listen. Um, we have one more minute. We have one more minute and then you'd be free to go, but I will go over, you know, a few things.
No, I'll stay.
Okay.
I mean, we still can go over the budget discussion. We just can't vote on it.
True. I mean, we did go over the budget last meeting. We can go over the public comments. See if anybody has anything else to add. Well, we've hit the six fifty one mark. So at this point, it doesn't look like we'll get the quorum. I see Anne from Troy had mentioned she had to update Zoom, so maybe other folks are having issues with that, that process. I do remember going through that a couple of weeks back here as well, so maybe we'll try and reach out to some folks prior to the next meeting. Um, so I would like to go over the comments we received for the public hearing. We had.
I don't need to take minutes though, right? I'm just gonna jump in and ask.
Correct. Yeah, in fact, Shannon, if you want to log out.
Yeah, I'm gonna go make dinner. Have a nice night, everyone.
Yeah, thanks. We had one, two, three, four individuals, five individuals participate in the public hearing for the budget. Four of them were haulers and then Steve Gray from the town of Linden also participated in the discussion. Their main concern was that the the surcharge is going up too much. And, you know, they're feeling pressures from other areas, fuel, insurance, landfill costs going up. And I said, well, you know, we certainly understand that. They felt like excuse me. Hello? Okay, hold on. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay. Whoops. So, you know, they were concerned that the, the extent of the surcharge increase was you know, fairly high. And that they were gonna have no choice but to pass that on to their customer base. And they were wondering, you know, because I explained to them how we had a number of things converging. And that our hope was that you know, by having the two dollar and seventy five increase this year, that we wouldn't have to make a similar increase next year. And they expressed some you know, concern and interest in possibly trying to implement the increase in the surcharge. I think the suggestion someone had was over a two-year period. And you know, I said, well, I would certainly take that concern to the board, which I'm doing now and which I will do, you know, in the public meeting or at our next board meeting, just to get it on the record. So I don't know, you know, I did explain to them that we had some situations with our trucks that we needed to address, situations with our labor situation that we needed to address. Also, the you know, finding a new executive director also adds a little bit to that as well. You know, they, they listened. But again, you know, they're focused on, on their spear. And or just wondering if there's any way we could soften the blow and spread it out over a two-year period. You know, I can go back and look at the budget between now and the next meeting and see what that might look like. We have pursued the lease of one vehicle. I'd like to move forward with leasing a second vehicle. But we don't have to do that until I'm thinking the first of the year, which isn't that far away. Really, the only room for delaying some of the surcharge increase would be in employee wages. So you know, I'll take a look at that, see what impact that might have. You know, I kind of get the sense that if if we could figure out a way to lower it, you know, a dollar, that that would be helpful. I don't know, Steve, if you got the sense that that might work. We really didn't talk about a dollar amount.
No, but you also mentioned if we do do the raises, maybe had those take effect in June or September.
Yeah, there was some discussion about delaying the, the employee raises for six months. You know, that would have a limited impact. You know, we'd still have to come up with the money for the second half of the year, but we'd also be halfway through the year and be in a better position to determine you know, whether or not we need to keep the surcharge at that elevated rate or some other rate. So, you know, I will try and summarize the comments. Steve gave me some written comments. So I'll incorporate that all for the next meeting. That way everyone who's on the call now will have some time to digest that as well as the folks that aren't on the call. And we can discuss that at the next meeting. And we'll do, we'll emphasize here that, you know, we, we have to have a quorum at the next meeting to put forward the budget for next year. So does anybody have any questions? Comments about that?
Are there other sources of income that we can adjust?
Well, we did adjust our hauling fees. The only other possibility really is the per capita assessment. And we kept that the same to fund the health insurance. You know, it's it's, yeah, that's really the only other avenue and you know, it would be something we'd have to do like a dollar increase in the per capita generates about forty seven thousand dollars. Whereas a dollar in the surcharge generates about half that. You know, I I guess we run the risk of angering our member towns at the expense of you know, the hauling community. But, you know, our our service is to the, to our membership. But, you know, if, if someone thinks that that might be something we want to consider. I can certainly throw that scenario together and see what it looks like.
Paul, this is Walter.
Yeah, go ahead, Walter.
Paul, I, you know, I went, I bought a selectman last month and said, I gave them the primary budget and how we weren't raising And how we weren't raising. Their per capita and also the per cap was started for a specific reason. And um, I don't think that should be touched. Um, and like you said, we our services to the member towns that got the hauling community. I am strongly against raising. Uh, the per capita. Uh. For uh, each town.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, the reasoning there. Um. But again, it can't hurt to. See what that looks like on paper for the next meeting. Um. But I'm sure you're not alone in in feeling that way. And others may feel differently, you know, and I think that. Um. Probably ought to have that discussion. Um, I did. Mention to the haulers that our surcharge is right about the middle. Um, I'm not sure how we end up. Staying in the middle year in and year out, but. Um, we we have, and I think that's a a good place. You know, the point people to is that, you know, there are some districts that. Uh, have a s- smaller surcharge, but there are an equal number that have a higher surcharge. And I think when you compare. The level of service that we provide our membership that. You know, we're we're actually doing more. Um, based on what we're collecting. Uh, for the surcharge. Um. And, you know, if we could, if we could spread it out over two years. I I'd certainly be willing to entertain that possibility. I just don't know. You know, there there was a lot of talk about. Uh, prices in the future, prices for different things perhaps coming down, you know. I don't think we're gonna see drops in prices. I think if anything, we may see the rate of increase go down. Um. But. You know. We might see a drop in fuel prices. Um. I'm sure any of you have traveled outside the state have already seen gas under three dollars a gallon. Not sure why it's so slow to go down in Vermont, but. Um. So, yeah, that that was their primary concern. Um. Was the wasn't necessarily the surcharge was increasing, it was the rate. At which it was increasing. Um. And, you know, I I am a little concerned about our budget. Um. Sure, the public isn't voting on it, but. Um. You know, we're the, we're the. Trailblazers this year, you know, our budget will be made public. Uh, prior to most town budgets. You know, I I I know a lot of uh. Towns have already. Sent out their tax bills and, you know, people have seen increases there. I just don't know what to expect. From towns and their budgets and how ours might compare to that. Um, some towns may look at our budget and say, oh, they went up six percent. Well, we can do that, too. And maybe nobody on the town level is really even looking at. You know, our budget. I don't know. Um. But I am a little concerned that we're gonna be out there first. Uh, with a budget with a percentage increase. That people will probably scrutinize. Um. But that said, you know. At the last meeting, we went over the budget and um. You know, I. I. I always feel like the budget is fairly tight. We could spend more money on a whole host of other things. Um. I do like the idea of trying to. You know, do the things that we need to be done in twenty twenty five. And then hopefully come back this time next year. And um. Have a a much more modest increase in the surcharge. Um, you know, somewhere in the seventy five cent, maybe dollar, who knows? Um, we may eventually have to look at the the per capita assessment. Again. Um. So anyway, those are, those are my comments. I do have um, an update on the uh. Executive Director. Um. Search. I've completed. The um. Position description. I've had it reviewed by someone at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Um, I've also created a timeline. I think I mentioned that in the notes. And if I. I can do this, right? I can share the screen. Anyone know where that function appears?
Paul, I have a question.
Yes, Jan.
What generates the most revenue? The surcharge of on the haulers or the per capita?
Surcharge on the hauler. By far. So if if you didn't hear that question, Jan asked, what generates more revenue? The per capita assessment or the surcharge on haulers? And it's. It's easily the surcharge on haulers.
And Paul.
Can't can't hear. On income, if we got more efficient, we could do more with our styrofoam. Could we ever increase how much money we're taking in by doing more styrofoam?
Well, we would, but be on a a fairly small scale.
That's what I want to know you.
Um, foam does generate probably the most revenue per pound. Uh, besides aluminum. But. You know, it doesn't weigh a lot. And um, we're still in the process of putting together our second load, which may generate a couple thousand dollars for us, so.
But even if we doubled that. To four thousand dollars, that's not really gonna change anything in the budget.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Steve, did you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's a unique year that we're dealing with your position. We're also hiring another person. These are expenses that we hadn't incurred before. We're looking at a truck issue. Um, I think that we had that discussion about the hauler's fee. And that if it showed that we were generating excessive revenue from that, that we were, we were able to lower that. During the course of the year. So I'm, I'm with you, Paul, on. Sticking with what we have set forward and uh. Trying to operate this and labor is tight right now and denying wage increases to employees. Might not be the best thing.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to retain um, our workforce, I I feel like. Um. You know, not only do we need to offer them raises, but we need to kind of get them caught up to where their peers are in other organizations. And I'm not just talking about other waste districts. I'm talking locally. You know, our our pay, I think, is lagged behind some of the other um. Public. Uh, institutions, you know, towns in the area. And so, you know, that that's who we're competing with really for labor. And um. We don't necessarily have to be equal, but we need to be close. So it looks like Nick just joined us, but we're still. Um. Four people shy of a quorum. So Nick. Um, if you can hear me. Um, we're just kind of going over some of the notes. Um. But we're not having a meeting. The meeting is still being recorded because I started recording it for the public hearing. In which we had um, four or actually five people participate.
Yeah, no, no worries. There I had a. Had some issues here tonight I had to take care of, so.
Yeah.
But everything's good now. Um, I can stay on though for a bit. Um, I still got some stuff I gotta do here, but.
Does anybody know where the function is for sharing? Screen?
Well, if you go to more, there is a whiteboard there, but I don't know how that works. Also notes.
Oh. Share docs. I wonder if that'll do it. Yeah, I apologize. I thought there was a simple button. To click on.
There is a share button, but I don't have a computer in front of me right now, so I can't tell you where it is.
No. Well, I can quickly um, review the timeline and I'll certainly send it out. Um, prior to the next meeting, so everyone has an opportunity to look at. I just didn't have it done. Prior to the mailing going out la- last week. So um. Um, I have uh, November, December of twenty twenty four, update the position description. That's been done. Uh, create a binder with tasks. So basically, I I'm planning on um. Creating uh, like a list of standard operating procedures for my position that I can hand over. Um, to my replacement. Um. Create the timeline for replacement. I've done that. Contact consultant for recruiting assistance. I have not done that, but I will. In the uh. Um, might even get a chance to do that this week. And then um. In January and February of twenty twenty five, work with consultant to develop recruitment plan. Finish the task binder. Um, and then we can do this. Maybe at the next meeting. Create a recruitment committee consisting of board members and perhaps retired district managers from other districts. Um, I did talk to uh. Um. One of my peers who's recently stepped down and she said she might be willing to spend some time. Uh, which I think would be invaluable. To get. You know, some input, whether or not she can participate, you know, in person. But, you know, a lot of this, I think, can be done. Um. Remotely anyway, but um. I'll probably try and do that. You know, before the end of the year, set up a committee now that we have the position description. Um. This committee will probably be involved. Well, we'll definitely be involved in selecting candidates. And also interviewing candidates. So. You know, the preparation. That they'll need to undertake would be to come up with questions. Um. And also. You know, if I um. Reach out to a consulting firm, they'll work with the consulting firm to help develop those questions and and. You know, things like that. Um. And I would suspect then the committee would be the. And and it could be the executive committee. I just, I don't want to limit it to the executive committee if if people from. The full board have an interest in this process and want to be more involved, so. Um, I think. We'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, because I think the sooner that committee is in place, the better. Um, and then. March, April, and May of twenty twenty five, conduct candidate search. So we would advertise. Um, I think that's gonna be. The thing that we're gonna need help with the most to get this in front of uh, qualified individuals. Um, developing the interview questions in the process. And then um. Maybe. If we're lucky, narrowing um, the candidate selection down to two or three people. June of twenty twenty five, first round of interviews, uh, July, second round of interviews. And then August first, notify leading candidate intent to hire. Then I have pending background check. Um. I don't know if that's something we have to do. I don't know if that's something that was done prior to my arrival. Not sure where I got that language from, but again, we can. We can pull um, the league in if we need to, to find out if that's something we should do. Um, and then October first, twenty twenty five would be the target start date for the new executive director. And um, that would leave October, November, December of twenty twenty five for any uh, necessary overlap. Um, and that certainly is up for. Uh, I think discussion as well, but I I feel like ninety days would probably be adequate. Um, I'm not planning on moving anywhere, so. You know, if uh, questions arise, I'd certainly be available to. To uh, answer any questions. Um. So again, you know, I know that's a lot to digest without seeing it, but I will send that out prior to the next board meeting. Any uh, questions or comments? I see um. Daryl Martin from Holland asked in the chat, you know, are there grants that we could seek that would help offset some of the money that we're, we need to raise through the surcharge? Um. The only grant that comes to mind would be for um. The uh, USDA. Solid Waste Grants, which we have obtained in the past. Um. And we have used money from that fund. To purchase vehicles. I don't know. If um. Leasing vehicles would be a qualified activity, and I'm not sure, you know, there, there are things that. Like improving the driveway. We don't have any money in the budget. Earmarked for that, but we certainly could pursue grant money, but that doesn't. That doesn't solve the the short-term issue of. You know, raising the surcharge. So I just.
Did you say, Paul, that he was trying to figure out the, how to? Lower the surcharge by having grants? Was that the question?
Yeah, so Nick, um, we we had um, three haulers represented during the public hearing. And they were all, you know, united in. Um. Well, you know. Telling us and 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 wanting the board to realize that. You know, a two dollar and seventy five cent increase in the surcharge was a lot. For one year. And if there was some way to lessen that, break it up. You know, over a two-year period or whatever. And, you know, I know you've expressed those concerns. At the budget meeting and and the last meeting as well, so. Um. I'm gonna sum.
Well, my. Yeah, no, I mean, mine was was because I know we have a lot of smaller haulers. Uh, you know, it's not a big deal for for ourselves and Casella so much, but yeah, it could definitely. Impact. And a lot of those smaller haulers pick up a majority of of Orleans and Es- uh, in into Essex County.
Right. Right. But, you know, in the grand scheme of things, uh, they're still picking up, you know, a very small percentage of the total trash in the waste district, so. Um, but, you know, they still have valid concerns and, you know, I I'm gonna summarize uh, their comments. Um, and, you know, present those to the board for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I mean, it's. And to be, I mean, who who are the haulers that we're in?
Um. It was uh, Got Trash, N K Rubbish and Green Mountain Rubbish.
Oh, all all in Saint Jay?
Um, well.
I mean, they pick up, they have the bag drops in in Linenville, but.
Yeah, yeah. Some of them live, well, one of them lives in Linenville, the other two live in Saint John's Mary.
I just wonder, I knew. Yeah, so, yeah. I I don't think it would really bother. I don't even think they probably dump what, maybe? Couple ton a week, if that?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean their concerns aren't valid, you know, because they're the ones at the margins, trying to squeeze out a living. Um. You know, and driving places that. You know, Myers and Casella won't go. Um, and doing it for less. Um, just to have the customer base. So.
Right.
You know.
Was there any other? Did they have anything else? I mean, was there any other people for the the? Um. Yeah.
Well. Steve Gray participated. Uh, and he handed me a, you know, some written notes, so I'll um. I'll write those up and um, provide that to the board for the next meeting as well.
Yes.
Um. So, yeah, that that was, I mean, it was kind of a lively discussion. We got off track a couple of times, but. Um, it, you know, it it was nice to see because I, as I told them, you know, in twenty-five years. I think we've had two other people participate in this process. When we've had the public hearings, so. Um, and Steve brought up a good point about, we used to have hauler meetings on an annual basis. And how come we don't do that anymore? And. Um, really, the the reason is that, you know, we have thirty registered haulers and we'd be lucky to get five of them to show up. So. Um, I did, I did suggest that because these are public meetings that they could log in. Anytime to a uh, one of our board meetings. Um. You know, one.
We could always cater, we could always cater one of our board meetings. You know, and start it off as and have the hauler part in there.
We could, and maybe we want to do that in like September prior to um. You know. you know, issuing a budget, a draft budget. So, you know, something to think about for the future. Um. But, you know, one of the folks kept emphasizing, you know, there's nothing in it for the hauling community. And I, you know, I kept telling them, you know, it wasn't set up for the haulers, it's set up for the membership. And, you know, we're set up to do the things that the private sector either didn't want to do or, you know, didn't want to do for um.
Can't do.
Yeah, or or reasonable, you know, fees. So, you know, I I think they understand some of that, but um, you know, they just see us as adding fees and and maybe they figure we're more approachable than someone like Casella who just absorbs it in their landfill costs and pass it on, you know, to the haulers as well. So, but yeah.
Ken here, I see that the um, to the hauler, this is simply an increase in their costs without getting any benefit back. Do we ever take the recyclable materials or what can we give back to them?
Well, we do um offer them free recycling. Um, so it's interesting, you know, what they'll tell me is, well, we can't do that because you require it to be separated. Well, that's why it's free. You know, so they have the option to bring us material. We have a few um smaller haulers that do that, but not many, because they they just don't have the time or the labor to sort through that, and they don't have the infrastructure to have their customers sort the material. So for them, the easiest thing to do is single stream, but it's costly. So they need to make a business decision about whether or not, you know, they want to get rid of it for free or pay to get rid of it. And um, right now, it seems like most of them have gone the pay to get rid of it part.
Would we take their recyclables if we charged them a fee that would pay for one of our workers to do the separation?
Um, we could.
I don't, I I don't, I don't think we want to get into that.
Right, because we don't have the labor to process foam right now, Ken, and and you've been here and seen that. So, yeah, we 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 don't have a place for them to dump it, let alone, you know, go through it to separate it. Any other questions or comments? And, you know, for folks who are still on the call, um, you're more than welcome to drop off anytime. I see a couple folks have. Um, I really don't have anything else.
Paul, did you, I guess, the only thing I, because I obviously, I missed a bunch here at the at the beginning, but um I know uh Montpelier was looking for um a part ED, part facility and whatever else as well, so. Have you heard how any of these other districts are are panning out, finding their help?
Yeah, um, Lemoil was able to replace Susan Alexander. Um, they were fortunate, they found someone locally who um was working for USDA and um was traveling to Montpelier um daily. And now, you know, I guess she lives in Morrisville, so I think that's worked out. Um. The Central Vermont District, I'm pretty sure, does have a new director. Um, I think they're um they had someone move up internally. Uh, but I I do know that um, I think Addison County is gonna be looking for a new executive director as well, so. You know, there there may be some competition. Um. I don't know of any other districts currently looking to replace their uh top position.
Yeah, I'm just, that's what I was just, I'm a little worried about it. We we're having a, uh, well, I mean, we're just having a hell of a time trying to find anybody qualified to do anything, but it's kind of making me nervous on this position too, because I know uh, Lemoil and Central Vermont both had issues trying to find somebody for a while, so. And then time will tell.
I don't know how long they were looking, but I do know that they both resolved their uh their labor situation as far as that position goes, so. Uh, I am encouraged by that, because I do think there are probably qualified people um, in the area. It it's really gonna be tough, it's gonna be a tough sell to try and attract someone from outside the area. Uh, especially if they have a family. If they're single, um, it it might, might actually work out okay, but um I I don't see how a family of any size really can move to Vermont and uh find affordable housing at this point in time, but uh, who knows what twenty twenty five will bring?
Well, hope for the best, right?
Right. So, uh, that's all I have. Um, anybody else has any questions or comments?
Paul?
Jan?
One thing, um, you said you developed a a draft for the position of your replacement. Are you gonna share that with us before we go to the timeline or?
I'll I'll uh provide that prior to the next meeting, so you'll get the position description and the timeline.
Okay. Because, you know, it's it's funny, sometimes you're so close to it, maybe there's something that somebody in a different position, like a supervisor, like might say something that is left out that, you know, should be there.
No, and and that's why I think we should have um, you know, more eyes on on this, you know, because I did have the lead review it, but it certainly wouldn't have hurt to have the the board uh review it.
Paul?
Yeah.
The compost bids are due, is it December fourth?
Yeah, prior to the next meeting.
Okay, yeah. And do you know how many people may take insurance?
Um, I did get clarification on that, yeah. Um. I have seven people currently um indicating that they would take the insurance next year. Um, I think there's still one question mark, and we're in the open enrollment period right now, so.
Well, seven or eight.
Seven or eight, yeah. Yep. Anything else before I stop the recording and it looks like we've lost a lot of people anyway, so um I will hit stop recording.